All right, folks, it's six o'clock and we'll get the regular meeting of the Mount Pleasant City Commission started. And with that, we'll call the meeting to order. And we could ask Bedford, Commissioner Bedford's gonna do the pledge of allegiance and Steve Rindfroh is gonna do our invocation for it. Bedford?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the people of this nation. One nation under God, indivisible, with every deed and justice for all.
My gracious heavenly Father, we have come to you thanking you for another wonderful day in life that you've given us. And help us as we conduct business here tonight to do it that will please and suit you and help us to always do what's good for the city in Christ's name, we pray.
Amen. Thank you, Jalen. All right, roll call, please, ma'am.
Ms. Granberry, absent.
Absent.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mr. White?
Here.
Ms. Blanketship, absent. And Mr. Smith?
Here.
All right. It'll be noted if Ms. Granberry comes in, let's make sure we do that. And for those of you that may not know, Commissioner Granberry's not gonna be able to have a commissary. Blanketship is not gonna be able to be here, she had to run to the doctor and everything, everything's fine, just FYI. Approval and correction admitted from the prior meeting, we have two here, please. One of them is from the work session and then one is from the regular meeting. So if you don't mind, look those over and I'll entertain a motion.
I haven't looked this over already, I'll make the motion.
We have a motion. Mr. Smith?
Second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Davis?
They have to be doing separate together.
No, they can be together.
We just got a note that it was for two sets of minutes. All right, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. At this time, I'm gonna suspend the rules of the meeting, please. And this is in an accommodation to the number of folks that are here. So please just bear with us for a second, if you don't mind. And what we're gonna do first, awards presentations and appointments. A will now be the soccer club, so if you don't mind, if you would please come forward.
Could you go ahead and do the rest of the changes?
Yeah, let me go ahead and get those done too, it'll be a good idea. B now will be volleyball. C now will be football. D will be Mayberry Day. E will be Community Development Board Appointment.
F will be swearing in.
And F will be swearing in our new police officer.
Yes, no problem.
All right, good deal. It's a great evening, thanks for everybody coming. This is neat to see, tell somebody that, I said the house was gonna be full for a good reason. You don't get this every day.
Thanks for having us.
No, thank you. All right, Office of the Mayor of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee proclamation. Whereas the city of Mount Pleasant and all its citizens are rightfully proud of its young residents, whereas the citizens of Mount Pleasant Middle School Soccer Team as an integral part of this community and whereas this team has exemplified the high standards of good sportsmanship and personal conduct in the 1920s season. Whereas Mount Pleasant Middle School Soccer Team had a record of three, seven, and one, head coach Tammy Cruz and assistant coach Matt Dodge were very instrumental in helping them obtain these outstanding wins. Whereas this team represented the city of Mount Pleasant, Murray County, and the state of Tennessee with the highest standards of participation and now Bill White, Mayor of the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, to hereby proclaim the date of November 19th, 2019, is Mount Pleasant Middle School Soccer Team Day. And we have each of you a proclamation, so congratulations. Yeah, absolutely, that's what we're here for, yeah, absolutely.
First year.
First year, congratulations, young ladies.
Y'all wanna get in, sir? Be okay, please. Sweet.
Congratulations.
Everybody got 'em? Congratulations, young ladies.
Y'all wanna make a speech?
Yeah, y'all wanna make a speech? All right, next we have the volleyball team. Young ladies again. Andre, how are you, man?
I'm good.
Good to see you here. Oh, look here, we got a trophy. All right, we ready? All right, another proclamation from the officers and mayor of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee. Whereas the city of Mount Pleasant and all its citizens are rightfully proud of its young residents, whereas the citizen recognize the Mount Pleasant Middle School Volleyball Team as an integral part of this community. The volleyball team overall winners in small school regular season, small school tournament and overall champions. Head coach Andre Baker and assistant coach Laura Sandrell in 2019, that is fantastic, young ladies. Yeah, let's give them a hand. Whereas these teams represent the city of Mount Pleasant, Murray County, and the state of Tennessee with the highest of standards in participation and now therefore I, Bill White, Mayor of the city of Mount Pleasant, do hereby proclaim the date of November 19th as Mount Pleasant Volleyball Team Day. And honor them and do call upon all the citizens and residents of the city of Mount Pleasant to join us in duly recognizing the outstanding performance of these teams during this 19th day of November, 2019. So let's get us a picture. Hey, I just wanna recognize a couple of folks here right quick. Dr. Jackson and Dr. Drinkwine are here. Thank y'all for being here and grateful for support from them, thank you very much. Anybody else who'd like to get in the photograph right quick?
Okay, okay.
Yeah, come on up, Dr. Drinkwine. Way to go, ladies. All right, next we have football.
I know there's a whole bunch more boys, but...
Yeah. Again, here's a proclamation from the Office of the Mayor of Mount Pleasant. Whereas the city of Mount Pleasant and all its citizens are rightfully proud of its young residents, whereas the citizens recognize the Mount Pleasant Middle School Football Team. The football team overall record eight and O. Quad County Conference Champions, head coach Cory Pickett, the assistant coaches Peyton Hollins, Jake Sykes, Elliston Bridges, Litten Hughes, and John Williams. Congratulations, guys, that's unbelievable. Anybody else wanna get in the photograph?
Let Miss Victoria get a good one. Wonderful. Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, thank y'all very much, Dr. Drinkwine. Man, I don't think we have anybody here for Mayberry Day, do we?
Just all of us.
Just us? All right, next we're going to have the Mayberry Day, and I'm not gonna read all this, but it is on December the 7th. For most all of that day, it's also our parade that evening.
Five o'clock is parade.
Five o'clock is parade, and then Murray Mayberry's gonna really be all day.
I think it starts at nine.
It does. And there's a lot of folks that put a lot of work into it, but again, we're doing a proclamation for it. As of that day, I'll come up that morning and I'll read it that morning there.
It's that day, that day is Mayberry Day?
Yeah, that day is Mayberry Day. Yeah, and there's a lot of people that put a lot of work into this, so we really do, I'll be there early and make sure we get this done correct.
December 7th is Mayberry Day?
That's correct, December 7th. All right, next we have Community Development Corporation Board Appointment. This is more cleanup than it is anything. Kate and I attended a Community Development Corporation meeting last week. And as we were going through the members of the CDC, it was recognized that the city of Mount Pleasant had Dolores as our representative, but when Kate and I were sitting there talking, it had never formally been approved by the city commission. We felt like just to make sure that we had everything in order, that we would do that. So I'm certainly fine with Dolores continuing to serve in that capacity. She's got her heart in that without question, so I would entertain a motion if anybody would like to make that appointment.
I'll make a motion for Congressional loyalty up for the Community Development Corporation Board.
I'll think of that.
We have a nomination in a second, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. And now we have a great appointment, swearing in of our new police officer. Chief, I'll let you come up, if you don't mind, make a few comments, and y'all with swearing in?
Mayor and Councilman, here's a staffer, Mr. Johnny Candia. He comes from, too, is from Mount Julian?
Mount, uh, Watertown.
Watertown, so, yeah, he's got three years' experience, four years' experience. He's bilingual as well, so that gives us two.
Good.
Yeah, they can have conversations.
Thank you, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Johnny Candia.
Do hereby swear.
Do hereby swear.
That I have all the qualifications.
That I have all the qualifications.
Named in the charter of the city of Mount Pleasant.
Named in the charter of the city of Mount Pleasant.
For the office of a member.
For the office of a member.
Of the police department.
Of the police department.
Of the city of Mount Pleasant.
Of the city of Mount Pleasant.
Which I am about to assume.
Which I'm about to assume.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Tennessee.
And of the state of Tennessee.
That I will comply with.
That I will comply with.
And observe the provisions.
And observe the provisions.
Of the charter of the city of Mount Pleasant.
Of the charter of the city of Mount Pleasant.
And the ordinances of the city of Mount Pleasant.
And the ordinances of the city of Mount Pleasant.
That I will faithfully perform.
That I will faithfully perform.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
For heaven and God.
For heaven and God.
No, I don't know. Seems like a mug shot. Yeah, that's all I need, yeah, be safe and thank you. That's a great way to start, folks. Yeah, congratulations to all those young residents of Mount Pleasant, that is fantastic, that's awesome.
Most who haven't been to City Hall.
That's, I guess they have. Y'all had one, asked me where we had to meet. All right, got that done. Number six, position to review of unfinished business from prior meetings. None that I know of?
Yes, sir.
Monthly report from mayor, and I'll be real brief, again, I said it in front of Dr. Jackson and Dr. Drinkwine, but they are really doing a fantastic job at the middle school, what they're performing over there. And we're gonna have another team directors to do in December, we just didn't have enough space for everybody, so get a chance, walk by and just shake their hand and say thank you, because it's beginning to really show.
Julie Tibble cannot be here, but she's right up there, too.
Right there, absolutely. So we're very, very fortunate. That's all I have, and then monthly report from city manager? No, I'm sorry, financial and budget report.
She couldn't wait, so, money up there.
Good evening, we just finished our audit today. They were here today finalizing everything, so they should be ready to present to you the audit at the December meeting. The, we've received, also, we have already received the audit from the electric system. They're usually the ones we're waiting on, so that was just, that was really good and much appreciated. It was, 'cause it's a lot of work, so we do appreciate it, and we appreciate everything that they do to support us. The October is the fourth month, it's also the first month where we begin collecting property taxes, so we usually see a little bit larger revenue and specifically more so in the month of December and in February. But October, we do start collecting, and we're actually, we've collected a little bit more than what we did this time last year, so we're already ahead of the game. And we ended the cash, the month of cash balances fairly steady, not much changes in them from prior months. Do I have any questions?
No, ma'am. I will have to say, I attended the meeting of the power system and Mike's our representative over there, and that, that ollie was excellent, it really good, I admire it. Fair white zone, it was a very good meeting. So with that, we'd entertain a motion to approve the financial budget report.
And make a motion to approve the monthly financial budget report.
We have a second. We have a motion and a second, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Monthly report from city manager.
The main monthly report is put together when I get the department heads reports and create the state of the city, that will be available, hard to believe, December 1st. But I just wanted to say that we have had some staffing change and that we are searching for a new works director, and we have positions posted. We're very fortunate that we have Bobby Nutt, who has been with us in the past, who has a tremendous knowledge of the system, and he is helping us get to where we need to be in the interim and probably will help us once we do find somebody. We already mentioned Ms. Bee, you wanna make sure everybody was aware of that, and we've already mentioned the Mayberry, Murray Mayberry on December 7th and the parade at 5:00 PM, and that'll be a big deal and a fun time for all of us, and really, that's all I had at this point.
Thank you. Any questions for Kate? Special reports from other departments? Wastewater?
The only thing I was gonna mention here is we are certainly making progress. We have met with on wastewater, we have met with Barge design, and we had our 30% meeting for the trunk line project and the Rainy Street project. So you have three projects that make up the big overhaul, the trunk line, Rainy Street, and the wastewater sewer plant. So we have not gotten to the 30% point on the wastewater sewer plant, just continuing to look at options there, but we're moving right along with the trunk line and Rainy Street. And it was very helpful, and I'm gonna make this part of the minutes, what Barge submitted at the study session, which is kind of a status update of where we are, and we'll have that as often as possible. Sometimes it might say the same thing, but at least we kinda know where we are with all this, all these projects, and we're spending quite a bit of money, so we want everybody to make sure where we are with it. But I'll incorporate this into the minutes, if anybody did not get this, let me know, and we'll make sure you get copied on it. But that's been very helpful.
Again, I'm thankful that we're moving out of here.
We are actually...
We're gonna show, we're gonna move some dirt, folks, finally. I wanna echo what Kate said about Bobby Nutt, I attended that meeting for just a few minutes to walk in and shake his hand and say thank you. Barge was there, it was, for what time I stayed there, we asked that they'd start giving us a little higher level just so we can understand where we were, because I know we're gonna have members of the community ask us, so I felt like it was important that we had something in our hands to be able to answer those questions to the higher level, so. That's to Kate and all the others, Debbie, Debbie Jo.
She's at a meeting right now with them.
I mean, we can't thank her enough for what she's doing, and Douglas, thank you, because I know where you stay. So, thank you. But that's all I've got to add to that, anything, anybody else wanna add to it?
I'm just lucky.
All right, anything on the gas system?
Yes, sir, we're all good there.
New business. Hey, ordinance 2019-1044, this is a first reading. An ordinance to amend Title 18 of the Mount Pleasant Municipal Code relating to sewer use by repealing Chapter 2 in its entirety and replacing Title 18, Chapter 2 with a new chapter pertaining to sewer use.
Mayor, members of the commission, I certainly want Cory to chime in here, but this last was updated in 2010, and we're getting our ordinance to read the same as the state regulations. The entire section has not been overhauled, it's a specific section in front of you, and Cory, I'll let you take the lead there.
So this is just Chapter 2 of the sewer ordinance? It's still pretty big, but basically what happened is our ordinance mimics the state's regulations. And so the state changed their regulation numbers, so not what they said, but just their identifying reg number. So that's been changed throughout here. If any of you look at the red line, you'll see a bunch of, the numbers changed, but Matthew and I both went back and checked to make sure the content was the same, it's just the numbers are different. Also, the state changed the pretreatment limits, the amount that each industry can discharge and then go through the pretreatment plant, and so those numbers are included, the new numbers are included in this draft. The only city change, I would say, is that it used to say that you had to, a mandatory hookup to the sewer if you were on a five acre lot or less.
One acre.
One acre lot or less, and now it says, no matter what size lot you're on, if you're within, if your structure is with 100 feet from the connection, then you have to hook up.
Or pay.
Or pay, yeah, and so there's a mandatory charge no matter what, but you're getting charged that amount because it's available to you, and the city pays for 100 feet of the line to your house anyway, so we wanna make sure people were connecting if they were that close to the road. So that's the only, I think, really, city administrative change that they want to mimic.
What they do, I guess the people that's over 100 feet, they have, I guess they can deny, get no, right? Or do they have to pay the other who sit at your feet to get to their house?
It depends, if they ask for it, they can pay that extra, but if they are more than that distance, the way they don't have to connect. That's the way it is right now.
You put together a nice little summary that she does, I've not seen till today.
It's a summary, but it's not a very easy to read summary, because this ordinance is complicated, but basically...
To save the lead, I'm worried.
Sorry.
Because we depend on, I guess you, you know, make sure...
Attorneys and engineers, right?
I know y'all had some questions about kinda what the sewer ordinance was and how it's enforced, and so I tried to outline that with this, but it's basically, industries have to, industries that put any of the, discharge any of the chemicals that are on that list in the table in the ordinance, have to get a permit for that, it's a city issued permit, pretreatment permit, and that tells them what their limits are and what they can and can't do, and it gives the city access to go check their business, make sure they're complying with everything. They have to mandatory report if they have an accidental discharge, or if they change what they're discharging, or pretty much anything that's not in that permit. And that makes sure that whatever goes into the city's pretreatment plant isn't, is not too much for the plant to handle it. So the plant is converting the discharge into clean water that it can discharge through the city's permit. So that's the bird's eye view, I guess, of what's happening. I know y'all were concerned about what the city's liability is, but there are, there's a lot of details in this ordinance, and it says exactly what the industries have to do and exactly what the city has to do once it's been reported.
And there's a process that we have to follow that we would, but even if somebody does put something in our system today, we're still treating it, so what is going out is not a problem. It's just that, should we have to treat, 'cause you put more into the system than you said you would, and that's what we're monitoring on a very regular basis. Now, you have issues in other cities, and it may even happen here. Some, there might be somebody that had something horrible they wanna get rid of, and they lift up a manhole and they dump it. There's only so much you can do, but the state's certainly aware of that, and we always self-report if there's a problem with something like that, but this is the guideline that's set up so that we've got a friendly relationship with industry, and they know what we can handle and what we can't handle, and we really work side by side with them to make sure that it's where it needs to be.
I'm sure residents can flush something.
It can happen every single way, yeah.
And the enforcement section is 18-210, and that explains what the city does if you feel like this is violated. You are also the enforcement board, so this board would be the one that would issue a complaint or an order or anything like that.
Yeah, since we don't have specific designated utility boards, every board is the city commission. And we haven't had a big problem with that lately, but that's what's there, and again, you would go with their recommendations from your engineers and your attorneys on where we are and things like that.
Not perfect, I appreciate it.
Anybody have any questions on that? And this is just first reading, so we will have time to dissect it more and look at it again.
And Matthew that Cory mentioned is with Barge Craig, and he is a great resource. That young man is awesome. And I bet we'll have more of these.
Always have to be updated on, yeah, if the statement, any changes we have to address.
We'll try to make sure we stay a little more effective than 2010. Anyway, any questions? Cory, thank you, again, your red line was...
Confusing.
Exhilarating.
With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the first reading that's presented on ordinance 2019-1044.
We have a motion, we have a second? We have a second, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. B, Resolution 2019-36, Resolution awarding wastewater treatment project bid, the head word's part of it, to BH Craig Construction Incorporated.
So all of you are aware, we have several projects that are going on with the sewer. And this one specifically is with the Murray County CTBG grant that we received. And so we did open up bids, and in your packet is how the bids showed up, the low bidder was BH Craig Construction. And we wanna go with the full bid at $558,000. That is $78,000 more than we had in our original plan to do this, but wanna make sure that all of you are aware that we've completely paid off the state revolving loan fund for the failed lagoon system. But regardless of paying that off, we're still setting aside that same money every month as if it's not paid off to create a capital account for things just like this. We don't pay the $78,000, now we're paying it later, so we've told the engineers, we just wanna move forward with all of it. And the good news is, right now, the trunk line and Rainy Street are right at budget. The wastewater plant, we're gonna have to tweak quite a bit, but this one, right now, at $78,000 over is not too painful, and we have the money to deal with that. So you're committing to specifically provide the additional funds not to exceed $78,000 in the wastewater plant program.
And just as a side note to this, we talked with Barge, and they did their homework and did a check with referrals on BH Craig Construction, they're out of Florence, so it's not like they're from somewhere we don't know, and they had excellent referrals. Everybody was very pleased with their work, so I think that's very nice to have. So with that, we'll entertain a motion.
There's plenty of trees in town that's from the curving. I've had them tear the lights off the garbage trucks before we go.
Yeah.
Lot of stooge bus drivers call me. They have trouble with.
Yeah, you think of like Gray Lane, that, that, that curve, that's a middle school, the trees always in there.
I just don't have any way to cut it.
I'd rather see you on the bucket truck than a ladder on top of the back of a truck or something else.
Well, we do in the back of a flatbed, I'm not talking about, I'm gonna tell you in the ladder.
Yeah. I'd prefer to have you off.
That simple.
And something suited for the job.
We do get asked quite often to cut on personal property, and we just don't do it.
No.
I appreciate the safety steps that you're taking, Steve, and making sure that we don't fall by a boy in that bucket, but I'm gonna have to agree with Bedford, I mean, I'd a whole lot rather have been done, I remember when I was a young man, my father was cutting a tree in the backyard on a ladder, and next thing I knew, we were headed murder, evil, hospital.
Not good.
I mean, it can happen, Cory, you can blink your eye.
Yeah, but I mean, we're not gonna have a city employee, you know, on a ladder, you know, that's.
Anyway.
Should I power cut, you not cut them?
Yeah, well, I mean, if it's in the power, you know.
It's in their line.
It's in their line.
No, we have got a great relationship with the power company, if something comes up and we can't address it, they help us, we help them.
No, no, I won't be near a power line. I'll be consistent with a power line cutting.
Yeah. Always, they're gonna be involved.
What, the actual, well, I meant, why should a power line, why should we not use the power line to cut it?
That's not what their purpose is, and we should never get near their power lines, they should never get near anything that doesn't have a power line. They have helped us in the past, if we had an emergency and a tree down, we couldn't get it up in a storm, but we should be able to take care of what is our right away, just like they already are very capable of taking theirs.
But have we looked at whether, whether it's cheaper or not, you know, the, I guess, to hire somebody out to cut it? I mean, have we looked, have we looked at that?
I, I know that I've looked at it enough, that in a, a couple times where it's in the middle of the night, there's no way that it's cheaper, because you're calling somebody out on an emergency basis, using their equipment, using their staff.
But I mean, that tree's gonna be down in the, in the road or whatever. It's not gonna be. Yeah, not always.
Right. But we've had a problem in Main Street where we could not get a tree out of the road, we're at Dollar General and Walgreens, and we didn't have the ability to do it. This won't be used every single day, once we get things where we need to be, but again, we're talking about $34,000, and it's a used piece of equipment, so we kind of think this is a good use of our money, long-term, going forward, to be able to address some of those things that we can't address right now.
And again, I want to remind everybody, what happens is the budget.
It is in the budget.
Yeah. I mean, I realize they have to just. Let me say this. You're talking about the safety aspect of it? That's not a drop in the bucket to what that garbage truck is going up that road. No, I agree. Not a drop. I agree. There shouldn't be a man riding on the back of it.
We'll be talking about that this spring.
Somebody's gonna keep it, okay?
We'll make sure it doesn't.
All right. Anybody else got any other questions?
We just need to vote on that. I don't think we got a vote on it.
No, not yet. I had, I'm just making sure if anybody's got any other questions or comments.
So have we checked to see how much insurance we're gonna call from that?
I don't think you're gonna have, it's kind of like we tell you with everything else, you're not gonna have insurance increase unless you have a claim.
Yeah, when you have a claim, that's a problem.
Like, we take over additional space and things like that, there's not an additional change, but if you start having claims, that's when your insurance is gonna go up, especially being part of the pool.
And workers' comp is based on, on salaries.
Salaries, yeah, but that won't change.
Won't change, but.
Unless you have claims. That still changes.
All righty, again, I want to, again, reiterate, when we, when we all worked on this budget earlier in the year, this was in there.
Yes.
And it was a request from Steve, he's had numerous requests and.
Yeah, and gas.
And gas, and it's, the thing I like about it, a number of departments are gonna get use of it, it's not gonna be a single-use type vehicle, and that's what I said.
And I appreciate Mike's.
I didn't say I answered it, hey.
But I mean, I know, you know, it's in the budget, but like I said, while we go, just because something's in the budget, you know, don't mean you have to buy it, there may be something else to come up, say, hey, we'll be this on the business, so that's, you know.
Well, we tried to make sure that as we did that budget, we sat down with each one of the departments and understood what was coming.
I understand.
So we didn't get blindsided by something like this.
I don't, I don't think we would be in front of you if we didn't think we needed it.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm sure you. All right, entertain a motion.
I'm making a motion that we accept the work from VES to purchase the bucket truck.
We have a motion, we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Let's do a roll call vote, please, ma'am.
Mr. Granberry?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
No.
Mr. White?
Yes.
And Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Three, one.
Yes, all right. Thank you very much.
Appreciate that.
Mike, you're always welcome, so you know that.
I know that.
We ain't gonna operate any other way, you know that.
I know that.
Just the way it's gonna be, brother. And we're gonna do it professionally, just like it was done. All right. All right, general comments from many citizens. We have anybody signing up, chief?
No, sir, nobody's.
All right. And I'll open it up one more time. Bedford, anything you'd like to add?
No, sir.
Mr. Granberry?
No, sir.
Mike?
No, sir.
Me either. Thanks, everybody, for attending. Let me ask that we suspend the rules to add an appointment to the Board of Zoning and Appeals. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
We have a second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, aye, opposed. All right. And I ask that we add an appointment to the Board of Zoning and Appeals for the City of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, to be effective as of today and serve for a.
They need a three-year term.
Three-year term, please.
I'll make a motion for Mr. Fairwhite.
All right, we have a motion for Mr. Fairwhite to continue to serve.
I'll take the test.
We have a second. All those in favor, oh, let me do this, please. Roll call, please.
Mr. Granberry?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. White?
I'm gonna use myself to vote, and I would like it in there that this is my father, and that's the reason that I'm stepping away from this, although I do support it, but I do want it to be noted that I stepped away.
And Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And I apologize, I think all the proclamations got us.
Yeah, we made it today, didn't we? But we did it for all the right reasons, and that's what's great.
So those three, they're the one of sanctions.
Correct. Cory, anything else we need to keep it clean, straight away?
No.
I'm just asking, you know, I'm only gonna do that. All right, with that being said, I move that we adjourn.
I'm making a motion.
All right, and second. All those in favor, aye, all right. Thanks, everybody, for attending. I know we had a little more than we usually do. No, it was not a problem, I'm always.
Congratulations, Ford.